Hello, everyone.
Hello, Elena. I'm sorry about all of that, guys. It's just the password to get into the town account. I must have just kept mistyping it. Finally, I just went back and cut and pasted it. So I think that's probably what happened. Now, I did have Kelsey set it up, so it is recording automatically as soon as I open it. So we should be good. One, two, three, four, five. Joy emailed me and said, Nick had his last class and it was moved, and so she had to take him. It was supposed to be last week and it was moved. So she will not be here, but we do have a quorum. So. Let me find. And. I appreciate people who emailed me back and told me that. It did go through. It's just I tried sending it through the account Deb set up for the library board. And I didn't get one back, so I didn't know if it had gone through. So Joy did tell me she got two, but she was happy she got two because that way she couldn't lose one. Okay, so.
Oh, Karen Anne, Deb said she's in the waiting room, I think, right now.
Okay. Okay. Hang on.
I may have to close the door. I don't know if the sound will pick up.
Okay. Sorry, I was busy trying to. And missed it. Yours said Hope and Debbie. I actually thought she was with there with you. I didn't know she was trying to get in.
Oh, my bad. I came to see her. She's at her desk.
Okay. Okay, so here's our agenda. We do have a quorum. Elena, Kathy, Joan, Rebecca, and I are here. So are Debbie and. Yeah, Hope, I just forgot your name. And I guess we have a visitor because I see something that says C and Bob. Okay, so I will start the meeting officially at 7:06. And this is December. Which means that it is time to elect new officers. So, um, to start with, I would like to make a motion that because she's been working so hard and has done so much that we vote Rebecca in as treasurer again.
You made the motion? I'm sorry.
I made a motion, yes.
Then I seconded.
Okay.
Yes.
Elena seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I would like first, yes, sorry. Yeah, Elena Testa. I wanted just to know if Rebecca is even interested in that.
Rebecca?
Yes, I'm willing to do it again, yes.
Thank you.
I would, I actually would not have nominated her except I had already talked to her.
Okay, very good.
Any other discussion?
Except that, thank you very much.
Okay, um, if that's the case, then, um, we vote to have Rebecca stay on as treasurer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All no? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay, so aye for Elena, Karen Anne, Kathy, and Joan, and Rebecca is abstaining. Okay, um. So, um. I don't know how anybody else feels. I know it hasn't been perfect. I've had a learning curve, but, um. I would be willing to serve as chair again for the next year. Yes, Elena?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Karen Anne as a chair of the Library Board of Directors for this year, 21, 22.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Rebecca seconds. Okay, any discussion? Okay, I don't hear any discussion, so. All in favor of me staying chair for the next year, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, Elena, Kathy, Joan, say aye. Rebecca, is that an aye?
Yes, aye.
Rebecca says aye. All opposed? Okay, abstaining, since I'm voting myself, I will abstain. Okay, vice chair. Joy emailed me to tell me that she wasn't going to be able to make it, and I emailed her back and asked her how she felt about being vice chair again. But I have not, let me just check to see if I've gotten anything new in the last few minutes.
I can call her. I can try and call her if that's okay.
That's fine.
So to make sure. Listen, pick up.
Okay. We can vote her in, in absentia?
I don't think we can. We can.
Yeah, we can, as long as we have a quorum.
Without your permission.
That's how I ended up being treasurer when I first came in. Joan?
Well, I just wondered if either Kathy or Elena would do that job.
Kathy's shaking her head no, and Elena.
About coming here.
Yeah, Elena told me the other day she was awfully busy because of personal things in her life. So Elena, are you interested?
Well, only if nobody else can, then I'll cover. Otherwise, I would prefer not to. Sorry.
Um, is it possible to table a vote for vice chair till next month?
Yeah, I would make a motion to table the vote for the vice chair for the next regular meeting.
Yeah, I'll second it. So Elena made the motion, Joan, Karen Anne seconded. Any discussion on that? Okay, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's unanimous. I have it. So we will table voting in a vice chair until the next meeting.
Um, who was the second on that one? I'm sorry.
I was. Karen Anne.
Okay.
Okay, um, secretary.
I have a question.
Yes, Elena.
So can we ask Joanna if she's interested to continue to be a secretary or not?
Yes, we can.
So Joanna.
Yes, I would do it again. I would do it again unless somebody else wants to do it.
Okay, is anybody else interested in doing it? I'm getting a lot of no's. Okay, so I will nominate Joan to continue on as secretary for the next year. Joan, that's Karen Anne nominating. Kathy seconding. Do we have any discussion? Okay, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. The ayes have it, and I somehow have lost my video. I don't know what happened to it. Sorry.
We can hear you, though.
Good, I'm glad you can hear me. It's just.
That's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, considering Saturday when nothing was working. Okay, um, so we've tabled vice chair till next meeting, and we have our chair, our secretary, and our treasurer set for the next year. So next on the, um, agenda is, we do have minutes from two meetings. The regular scheduled meeting of November 8th that was cut short, and the special meeting on November 15th to, um, continue on what was supposed to be done on the 8th. Okay, so do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the shortened regular meeting on the 8th? Okay, Elena makes a motion to accept those minutes. Do I have a second? Kathy is seconding. Okay, do we have any discussion on those minutes? Okay, then all in favor of accepting those minutes from the 8th. Rebecca, do you have a question?
No, I'm just.
Are you just saying aye early? Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, it's unanimous. The ayes have it. Okay, then we had a special meeting on November 15th to finish the, um, meeting that we were supposed to have on the 8th. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes? Okay, I can go. Okay, Rebecca.
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes on November 15th.
Okay, so Rebecca makes a motion to accept the minutes of November 15th. Do I have a second?
I seconded.
Okay, Elena will second. Is there any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, then all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Kathy, Rebecca, Joan, Karen Anne, say aye. Um, nays? Okay, zero nays, abstain?
I abstain because I wasn't attending that meeting. Sorry.
I remember you were sick that day. It's fine. I understand completely. So Elena's abstaining. Okay, but the acceptance of the minutes passed. Okay, the next thing on the list was communications because I thought I was going to have something to communicate, but it didn't come through. So, um. Does anybody have any communications they want to share? Okay, then we can move on to the treasurer's report. Let me open that. I gotta find it. Okay, here we go. I have it. So back to the Zoom meeting and share my screen. And here is the treasurer's report.
All right, for this past month of November, we had a beginning balance of $167,309.46. Revenues were higher, a little bit higher than we usually see at $691.04. And expenses, you want to scroll down, Karen Anne?
Sure. Sorry for the hiss you just heard. I was opening my soda.
Expenses were $15,510.42, leaving us with an ending balance of $152,490.8. Any questions on that?
Um, what is the miscellaneous income?
That's a good question. That's a question for Hope and Debbie.
Yes, um, so we had two expenses. One, the big one, which is why it's so high, is because we had over $300 come from Lowe's as a refund to us. But because it was a refund from 2020, from last year into this year, and it was on the old budget as well, we couldn't put it back towards the line item, so we ended up moving it to that miscellaneous income. And the other thing was a book that a patron ruined and had to replace, which the book was older than this previous budget too, so that's where we put that as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the treasurer's report? Okay, then, thank you, Rebecca. I will close this down. And back to the agenda.
Can I backtalk a little bit?
Sure, Joan.
Something I don't understand here. Friends of the library, 176, et cetera. Was it a specific thing they paid for, or did they just feel plush and hand out their money or?
You know, actually, that amount was our third quarter transactions with the friends. So anything that went to programming, anything that they paid for basically related to program, that's what that is.
Oh, okay. I just wondered what, how it showed up there. Okay, thanks. I'm sorry.
You don't need to be sorry. That's why we're having a discussion.
Yeah, well, I hate to take up time for things, but I just wondered what was going on.
We just, we need to clarify things. So if anybody has any questions, we clarify them.
Okay, yeah. Staff software.
Okay, do you want me to put the treasurer's report back up?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I can ask somebody later on that. Staffed software. Did we, we bought new staff for training or?
The $1,745.
Yeah.
This is our annual fee for our autographics.
Okay, okay.
Yep, that's versatile, our cataloging system.
Oh, okay, thanks. Okay, I'm sorry. I've taken up enough time.
Okay, any, any other comments or questions on the treasurer's report? Okay, then. Come on, behave. So next on our agenda is the director's report. So let me find that. Okay. Deb, Hope, somebody?
Um, the first thing we have is the ARPA. There's an ARPA, um, community input survey. We just put out there for you guys. It's for all citizens to do to help the town figure out how to best spend, uh, ARPA funds. The survey can be found either online, or we do have some hard copies in the library. Um, we had the craft fair and bake sale this Saturday. Uh, it went really well. There's a couple baskets left over, only a couple that we have on display to sell to patrons going forward. Um, previous director's debt, as you seen, we contacted the previous director. We actually did receive a check today for $200, so the remaining balance is $312.84. Um, Debbie, undo the CIP.
Just that there, um. Okay, I'll make a long story short. Um. We, we have things that we would like to or should be submitting to the CIP committee. They have a deadline of December 30th coming up, so, um, that's something that we should probably talk about.
Yeah, I have it on the agenda that we will be talking about in a few minutes.
I'm thinking the same thing. So we can, uh, talk about that later. Uh, next, the monthly drawings. We could use help with that. We did have, uh, we didn't have anything for December. We didn't get anything for September until this Saturday, when someone donated two of their tickets for an event, uh, any, any event at the packing house. So, um. This is a fundraiser. We are trying to raise revenue for the library. It's something that we'd like to continue every month. It's not that it's raising a lot of money, but it is something. Um, we could use help in promoting it. We could use help with the board looking to the businesses in town to see if there's not something they can't donate for the months ahead. Right now, we don't have anything for January. We do have something. The friends have given us something for February and for April. But it's not too soon to be looking into it. Um, I know we've, we've asked a couple of Dunkin' Donuts. We were hoping that they were going to come through for us for December, but, uh, they didn't. We're still waiting here from them.
Okay, Deb? Friends are giving in February and April. Is that because it's seasonal or something? Is there a reason they're not giving January?
Yeah. Kind of the theme of Valentine, the sweetheart basket. Uh, the one for April would be a Cinco de Maya. Being to it, so we're good for those two. Um, we will even take if somebody wanted to make something. It doesn't have to be from one of our businesses. We were just looking for support, and it's great for the businesses too, as far as, you know, advertising for them and supporting, you know, supporting them. It's just, um, getting out there and, and, and making those requests. We could use help with, or any ideas that you can think of. That with the surrounding communities that, um, I, even Hope and I were thinking about with, um. Oh, what's a place that, uh, the job lot down at Phelps Corner? You know, thinking maybe they might have something to donate, something physically, not necessarily gift certificate, but, yeah, we need ideas and help with that.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we're kind of exhausting some of our ideas, so we could really use some input. Just to make that successful. Uh, as far as the air purifiers, um, when we had purchased them with grant money last year, we were not told, unfortunately, that there was going to be, uh, continual costs as far as filters and bulbs and whatnot. And when they approached us that it was time for us to make these replacements, we, we don't have the money. We didn't include it in our budget. We had no idea that that was going to be happening. The person who misinformed us or who did not give us, uh, full disclosure of what was going to be included, although we did ask, um, in our defense, um, he's no longer with that company, but the company is honoring, um, the purchase. We did buy three filters. They were not cheap. Um, each were over $1,000. It seems that, uh, every year we do, or we're supposed to be replacing the filters and the bulbs, and that's going to start costing us a little over $600 a year. It was not budgeted. We'll have to budget it with the next, this upcoming year's budget, but the company was very good to us in that they are giving us, through a special that they run, these things for free for this first year. So, um, we were grateful for that. It was kind of a shock. Like we say, we didn't realize that was going to be the case moving forward. But it is what it is, unfortunately, and they are working with us. But again, it's a $600 expense that we will be incurring.
Okay, Joan, question?
Okay, I'm a little bit not clear because I don't hear Debbie well either. Um, Debbie, did you say we pay, we didn't pay anything this year?
No, we did not.
Okay, okay, so for this year, we got them free. For the next year, we expect to have to pay budget $600 a year for filters and bulbs, right?
Correct.
Okay, I think I got it. Hi, George, I've got it. Okay. Okay, thank you.
And then as far as the town's mowing, uh, lawn mowing company, uh, we had a lot of complaints with them as far as how the work was done. The owner did come out and we spoke. We, we showed them our concerns, problems where, you know, the lawn was torn up. He went over everything with us. He apologized. Um, he gave us a lot of good suggestions as far as what we could do in some problem areas, um, that he explained why this was happening. And, um, going forward, hopefully, um, we won't have that same, uh, those same issues or problems. He is making some, he made some suggestions. He's going to, uh, put it in his proposal to the town when this next bidding season comes up, and hopefully the town will accept it. And he'll be able to follow through on it, and we'll be able to pick up some of his suggestions and run with it. So, um. It was a good thing. I, I, I think that, um, going forward, we're in a good place. As long as he does what he says he will do, um, we won't have anything really to complain about, and things will get resolved. Just a reminder, Mr. Navratil, who is our accountant, did file our IRS form on November 30th, so that was wonderful. And, yeah, just a couple reminders. And it's stating that if, uh, any of you board members are not on our eBlast, we really would like you to be. Uh, it's something that comes to you instead of you looking for what's going on at the library. Also, now with the new year starting with new board members, um, does everybody have a board member's note binder explaining, uh, what your job is? Because if no one does, we'll, we'll, uh, get you one, but everybody should. I just want to make sure that you do.
Um, since we're all the same, and I know we worked really hard to make sure everybody got those binders last year. Look, I got my video back. Um, I think we all should have them.
Is there anyone who isn't on the eBlast that you could share with us so that we can get you on the eBlast?
I know I'm, I know I'm not.
Because that's the way you, you'll keep the most updated as far as what we're doing.
Okay, Deb, if you want to put me on it, that's fine.
You just said that.
Karen Anne.
Okay. So Kathy Elaine, everybody else is on it?
Rebecca and Kathy are shaking their heads. Yes, Elena?
Yeah, I'm on it.
Okay, Joan's on it.
All right. I'm so sorry. Even the, no, what is that thing is, was it?
Oh, my, then you must not be on it.
It's, I'm sorry.
It would be like, it would be like the town has their emails that, that you sign up for so that you get all the notices and whatnot.
I don't think I'm on it either. I thought I had signed up, but I don't get these, so.
You don't?
Oh, I do get. I do from the town. I get all the emails.
We don't go, we're, we're not on the towns. Um, we have our own, because we have our own, we're not on the towns.
Okay, so is, is the way you can sign us up, me and Kathy?
That's what I'm asking, if you're not.
Could you please do that?
Okay.
Sorry.
Kathy and Elena.
No, it's okay, Elena. We need, we need clarification on all of this. Like I told Joan earlier, ask questions if you don't understand. That's what the meeting is for.
First to know through the library what's going on at the library. And it's good for the board to have that. All right, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions about the director's report? Okay, then I'm going to close this down and bring the agenda back up. So the next thing on the agenda is formation of some committees. Um. We really still need to get job descriptions out because we do have this sick leave escrow account that currently cannot be used because the way things are written, no one is eligible for sick leave. We need to get job descriptions for Deb and Hope that, and they don't have to have specific titles. I looked it up with the state library board. They don't have to have specific titles. They just have to have a job description that matches what the state says is a job eligible for, sick leave. Because otherwise, there's no point having this sick leave escrow account that we've built up with money. Because otherwise, there's no point having this sick leave escrow account that we've built up with money. And Rebecca, do you know how much money is in that sick leave escrow account?
Not off the top of my head. I can look it up while you guys are continuing the meeting and I can tell you.
Okay. So the question is, is there anybody that would be willing to work on a committee to try and write these job descriptions? It wouldn't, Elena?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Sorry.
I was gonna say, it shouldn't take much because really if you just go to the state library board and, and see what they say and see how it matches with Hope and Deb, it should be fairly fast and easy. So did you have a question, Elena?
Well, my, my suggestion was, I remember, so we probably, as for the description, official description, we just can contact them and ask. Oh, you mean we can go on the library board's site and find the description there?
Yes, the state library board has a set of descriptions for what constitutes the head of the library and library techs and all the different things. And it tells what job is associated with each one.
So then, then let me continue. I remember when we had policy committee, it was me, Kathy and Joy. And we spent like five, seven hours. We spent quite a few meetings. And I'll tell you, it was a disappointment because when we came to the meeting, nothing was accepted. I think it was before you maybe. So at this point, I'm very careful with spending my time. You know, I don't want just to waste seven hours. So my suggestion is, how about if like there are important requirements? Or like, for example, this job description needs to be done. Can we put it on our agenda? But I, for example, can take, can be responsible in finding out the requirements from the state library, which I can find out and mail it to everyone. But, but if we will take a few minutes to discuss it right during the meeting, so it would be, you know, it would not get that wasting time for the committee.
Joan? I'm going to suggest, and I'll move if we have to, that Elena and Kathy and Joy be asked to reconvene the policy and procedures committee and let them run with it. They've got the experience. They've worked together. You know, let's, let's build off of what they've already done and what they already know.
If we're going to ask them to do that, could we possibly find back in our minute someplace what they had done before that Elena said didn't get passed? So we can relook at all of that stuff?
Well, I think that if they've done it, they'll pull it up and they'll bring it at the next meeting. I don't have anything and I don't know, you know.
It's not, yeah, it's not that easy. It's not, I'm, I'm sorry, guys. Yeah?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry for interrupting. I had such a busy day. We had a fire in the house and my book. So I'm sorry. I apologize. For interrupting. So first of all, it's not that easy to find it. I think what I did, I video recorded those meetings. I don't think they were posted or I can try to find whatever we did. I would suggest just forget about it because it was two years ago. So we don't want to really to waste time. Let's move whatever is needed. If you want, if you are willing to listen to us, we can, I'm to meet and I don't know about Kathy. I don't know about Joy, but we can ask Kathy.
Kathy's nodding her head. I don't know if that means yes, she's willing. Okay, yeah, so.
I don't mind doing it.
Okay, we'll have to talk to Joy about it, but if you and Kathy are willing to at least look into that and then bring it to our January meeting.
Well, January, January meeting is, yeah, let's do it. Otherwise, it's too condensed with timing, with holidays. I don't know if we will be able to meet. It's only next week since there is vacation, then I don't know how.
I wasn't even thinking that Christmas is only a week and a half away. My brain isn't there yet, but you're right.
Let's put this on the agenda for February.
February would be good and we'll try to meet after regular January meeting. So maybe before. We will definitely try to do that.
Okay.
Right. And then I have a question if we talk about it because I already went through it, those meetings. They're public meetings and they do need to be recorded. So can I use our regular library account? I still have it. If it was not changed, I can just use that account and set the Zoom meeting via library Zoom account. Is it something what is still working?
Yeah, it's all this, it should be all the same information still.
Okay, so then if that's okay, then that's how I will set and post the meeting for, for that particular purpose.
Okay. Any other discussions? Okay, then the next one is the building. And this, this is a big thing. Because there is ARPA money. The town got $1.7 million in ARPA money. They have spent 123,000. Well, this is, this is as of November, when I, I heard from Erica in the town. They had spent 123,000 at the senior center and I don't know if they're, they've done anything else. But there is still almost a $1.6 million left. I went and looked at this. Okay, let me, let me get out of this and see if I can find the email that I sent to all of you that discussed all of this. Um, I think I just closed down my Gmail account. Shoot, give me a second to reopen it. Okay. Share my screen. Okay, so this, this is the email that I sent out. And I didn't see this. You're on the list.
When did you send it, Joan? When did you send it?
December.
Second. Must have gone right by me. I'm sorry.
I didn't see these.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I, I know Elena said she didn't see it the last time I talked to her. So I talked to the town about this and I looked into it. And technically, the library is not allowed to apply for ARPA funds. Okay, I, I downloaded the entire act. And typical of a Congress act, it, it's not really readable. But I did find this nice lawyer office that had condensed everything. They're in Wisconsin, but the ARPA program's a national program, so the rules are the same everywhere. And it says that the library is technically not eligible, but recipients can transfer to a private nonprofit like Friends of the Library. And then Friends of the Library could use that to improve the library. So I'm going to a Friends of the Library meeting tomorrow night to talk to them about this. And then there is a town ARPA meeting at the town hall Wednesday night at seven o'clock. Um, because this is infrastructure money. And the building is 15 years old. And structurally, it's sound. We saw Ralph's report. Structurally, it's sound, but it needs some work. And a lot of it's cosmetic. Um, but why should we have to pay for it if there's money to do it? Um, so um, what I need to know is if Rebecca, Deb and I talk after the ARPA meeting and we put together a proposal for a certain amount of money to do some of this cosmetic work. Deb, did you get the estimate from Sean today?
Karen, this is all backwards.
What?
I, I had, I looked for it, but no, nothing came through.
Okay, Joan, we have to have, we have to have an estimate. We have to put a proposal together.
Just a minute, just a minute, just a minute. You have in your agenda that you're going to do a buildings and ground committee. Let's settle that.
Okay, well, I.
Committee will go to the meeting and they'll draw up a proposal for here.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. But my point is, the reason I'm discussing, okay, building committee. I, I volunteered, Deb has volunteered, Rebecca, because you're treasurer, you said you were willing to help us with it. So that's our building committee. If everybody's okay with that.
I want to renege on something. I want to sit on the building committee.
Okay, I asked you and you said no, but I'd love to have you.
Just a minute. Just not to really get involved in this piece with Ralph, et cetera. You guys have got it. You've got a good handle on it. But when, the other night I sat and thought about this and I said, there's one piece here that we haven't put into place yet. Before any work can start, even on the outside, we have to make that building accessible to them. They can't point the stones if you've got all those bushes and stuff. And I thought, well, wait a minute. I've got the garden club contact. So I would take care of that piece of it. And, and doing, doing some of that background work, getting ready for the crews to be able to work on it. If that's acceptable.
That is acceptable to me. How does everybody else feel about that discussion? Elena, no, you're good with it?
I think it's, I think it's wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, Joanne.
Well, I just use my contacts to work on some of the landscaping and stuff, that piece of.
Yeah, for anybody that doesn't know what she's talking about, we have a lot of bushes to grow all the way to the building and they, they are not allowed to be. There has to be space to walk behind the bushes. And I was actually planning on Thanksgiving weekend going and starting some of that till this happened.
I don't think, I don't think we have to push it that fast, but I think over the winter, we, it's because they're not going to be ready to do this.
No, 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 I just, I had Thanksgiving off. Charlotte didn't come home. I figured I could do some stuff, but.
Yeah, but we get, I. The more people you get involved in a project, the more they own, you know what I mean? They own it. They feel a part of it and they're going to make use of it. So I thought this is a good chance to get a group like the garden club. And get them involved in something that they know and something they do. And, you know, kind of integrate them more into the library community, so to speak.
Okay.
Now, that was my, one of my reasonings behind this.
I, I think that's great. So is it acceptable that our building committee be Deb, Joan, me and Rebecca, just because of the finance stuff? She needs to help us with writing proposals for the finances. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, then. We've got some deadlines is the problem. And we can't keep putting this off because we have deadlines. So I would like to go to the ARPA meeting Wednesday night, see exactly what they say about monies that are available. I understand from Christine and if Joan can pronounce it for me. I have no idea how to pronounce her last name. The registrar of voters. Um, that they're not ready to do anything just yet. They are still putting their committee together, but the committee will decide how the money is spent. So, but it is something that, you know, we, we've been kicking the idea of doing work down the road for so long. And now that we found out that there's money available, it's a really last minute thing to try and put together. Elena?
Yeah, I don't think that the committee is a set question yet. There is, there is still a town meeting on Wednesday. And they will be talking about creating that committee. So we'll have to wait for the official results of that meeting.
Right, that, yes, we do. But once we get that, we will know who's on the committee and when they're taking applications for money and all of that sort of stuff. I'm not doing anything till after the town meeting on Wednesday. Um, and like I said, I have a meeting with, I'm going to the Friends meeting tomorrow to discuss the idea that this statement says recipients, recipients being the town, may donate funds to a nonprofit like Friends of the Library to improve the library. So I'm going to talk to the Friends about that. Because we can't do anything until everything is, you know, there's a committee, Friends will say yes or no. Um, but it would be nice if ARPA would cover some of the, the basic things that we need done. Um, then we have CIP. CIP is taking applications for money for the 2023 to 2025 budget. CIP is a capital improvement project, which allows any big projects to be done with money that's not ours again. Um, there, I don't know how big the CIP committee is. I think it's 11 people. I'm not sure, but one just recently resigned. So I sent an email this morning to Kelsey Allard. Requesting a consideration to replace Orlando. So the library has a say on this. But this would be something that we would use to try and get money to help pay for finishing the basement. I did some research. And finishing the basement may not be as expensive as we think it might. Give me a second to see if I can find where I am. Okay, this is a website that I found. It's called Home Guide Costs for Finishing a Basement. And they say the average cost for finishing a basement, and this, this includes everything. I can scroll down, is only about $40 per square foot. I meant to stop by the library today and see if I could get an actual square footage on the basement. But I didn't get out of work till 10 past five and I needed to come home and eat and get to this meeting. So I don't know what the exact square footage is, but this website includes ranges for low end, high end, average. It gives national costs. There is a, there is a site that specifically talks about Connecticut. It talks about um, finishing with an open plan or walls. It's got labor in here. It's got all the finishing things and how much they would cost. These are per square foot. It's got ceilings in here. It's got flooring in here. It's, it's got a lot of stuff in here. So what I'm saying is the basement may not be as expensive as we were thinking because it's got all the bones. Those are all there. It's just a matter of framing, getting walls up, doing that sort of stuff. But our big problem with finishing the basement is egress. The current back door out of the basement is not an acceptable escape door because it goes straight down a hill. So if we were going to do that, we would have to put a deck out there and ramps around the building and going to the north side of the building. That's a really steep area. I don't think we could put even with switchbacks a ramp there, which means we would have to go all the way across to the parking lot. So Sean, who is from Sanaxo and came, he, it's a contract masonry thing. He came out to look at, at the stucco and stuff. But he knows lots of contractors and people. And he said that maybe it would be cheaper to cut through the current community room and out that door because that door takes you out to the parking lot directly. So that would, that would increase our cost, but not nearly as much as the cost of having to put in all of that stuff in the back. Um, the concern I have about this is the deadline is the end of this month. If we don't get our. If we don't get our proposal in by the 30th of December, we have to wait two years. It would be 2024 before we could, Joan?
Hey, how about if we put in the CIP, an estimate for the outside? The outside is the first problem, the inside is not an issue right now, the money is set aside for the ins, for the inside.
Because CIP money doesn't come for another two years, Joan.
Well, that's, well, we may have to play the game with it then, but why do you want to get CIP money for the inside, we have it, hmm?
Because I want to get ARPA money for the outside.
Okay, why don't you, um, CIP, okay, so we want to get an estimate for the inside, then we'd have to get a contractor to give us an estimate.
Right, but, 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 we can't, we're not gonna get a contractor in before the 30th. So what I would like to do, but we have to vote on this, is to use samples of a website like this that gives an idea of how much things cost per square foot, and put, and then do high end and, and that sort of stuff, just to get a rough estimate in, because I would guess that most CIP plans are actually not, the ones that are going in are probably not perfect, and are not just, you know, this is, this is the cost of everything, because it does, we're not, if we put in CIP money, we do not get it till, like I said, a year and a half from now, so prices would go up, things like that would happen, so I, I'm assuming that most CIP would be, um, a, an estimate anyway, yes, Elena?
Yes, being ones of word of education, for four years, uh, we, what we would put on CIP, it would be an official estimated price. It was not something, it was a price given to us by official, by official contractor. So somebody, that's a final price, we can back it up, who's gonna give it to us, not just certain amounts, they count every penny. They will not let it slip.
Okay, then, if that's the case, we can't put in for CIP money, we just can't, because it's two weeks away. Two and a half weeks away, so, we can't do that, so Joan, there's no way we could put in CIP money for the outside. Yeah, you know, considering what ARPA is for, CIP is for big projects that you want to get done. ARPA is for fixing things, doing, um, upgrades and stuff like that, um, where was, where was the thing that I had? What does it say? Improvements to the library or purchasing of new equipment, that is what the ARPA funds are for.
Okay.
Um, so if, um, sorry, if all we want to do is, you know, upgrade, because the building's 15 years old, then it's not a capital improvement project, because it's not big enough money to be a capital improvement project. Capital improvement projects are big money. Okay, Rebecca, did I say something wrong, because you look like a deer in headlights?
No, you're fine.
Okay. Um, which is why I was thinking that basement might be able to go on that, um. Another thing that came up, as we were, um, discussing, walking around with Sean, is if the library were to ever have a fire, and the fire was near the, the front of the building, near the, the book checkout, and Hope was in her office, Hope would die, because she has no way to get out.
She has windows.
What?
She has windows.
Yeah, the window, that's three stories up.
Ah, yeah, I would, I would, sorry.
Yes, Joan?
You know, with any luck and God's good graces, I wonder if somebody could give us a, um, estimate on putting out the fire escape out there.
Okay.
It would be replacing a window, so it would be openable, you know, that kind of thing. I wonder if that would be a little bit easier, and that might just be enough money to go on to CIP.
Sean's boss's wife is our contact for that, she has done that, she's a structural engineer, she can do that. Um, Deb has her name and number, and so that's the person that we were going to contact about that. Because, yeah, we would have to replace a window for an egress window. Um, but, yeah, I don't think Hope wants to jump out a window and go down three stories to a very steep hill and roll down into the woods. I'm sure Deb is even less happy about doing that. But, I'm taking a class this semester, and it's all in OSHA regulations, that's all I'm taking, is OSHA regulations on top of OSHA regulations. And it says that you have to have at least two exits, but it also says you can't have any place where people would be trapped. And that would be the situation at the back of the library and the offices, is people would be trapped. So that, we, that is something we also need to do, is contact that woman and get an idea of how much that would cost.
And that, you know, she is really available, you know, in town available kind of thing, she just may be able to give us an estimate, because the fire escape would really have to go along the back of the window, so that people that are in the very back would have an e, an exit onto the fire escape too.
Right.
There would have to be two windows there that would open out onto the fire escape.
Right, we would need two egress windows and a long enough fire escape to go down all along.
Yeah, I just thought of that, I hadn't thought of that before.
Um, she's not in Wellington, I believe Sean said she's in Columbia, but it's still
That's close.
Down the street.
Yeah.
So, we need to talk to her about that, because that is something that I never thought about. But, once I thought about it, I got a little scared for Hope and Deb.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so let's go forward then at this point with getting an estimate on the um, outside stuff, the, the cosmetic stuff that needs to be done, and getting an estimate.
You know, that's not all cosmetic. It's, you know, it's, it's not-
The foundation itself is, the foundation itself is fine, the front pieces need to come off the foundation, make sure they're watertight.
I know, but it, in order, cosmetic always says to me, just to make it look good, this is really some, um,
No, but, but-
For the stability of the building and the building integrity.
That, I'm not saying cosmetic in that way, I'm saying cosmetic on the outer layer. I'm sorry if I've used a-
No, I just, well, I don't want to put, I don't want to put that term in the minutes, very honestly.
Okay, so what word would you suggest?
It will be misinterpreted, and it will, it will just be upgrading or repairs, exterior repairs.
Exterior repairs is fine.
Exterior, it's to the envelope, repairs to the exterior envelope, I think that is the, kind of the-
Okay.
The lingo.
That's fine, yeah, because people should understand the foundation is good. There are just cracks on the front pieces that are on the foundation that could allow water to get in and could be, over time, dangerous to the foundation. So, they, the, the veneer type things need to be repaired.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so is everybody good with the idea of going ahead with getting estimates for that and for a fire escape? Do we need to make a motion for it?
We may have to have a motion to pass it, but I don't know if we have to make a motion to, if-
Yeah, I don't think we need to make a motion to get the estimates, but once we got the estimates, we would have to have a motion to, to accept it. Okay, so we'll, we'll move forward with doing that, then, okay?
So, if we're going to pass it by the 31st, it would be okay to call a special meeting on that? Just, just FYI, we can, we could do that if we had to.
Okay.
Get up in the morning, put your jammies on, grab your coffee and meet for 35 seconds.
So what Joan is saying is, if we get an estimate that we would like to get into CIP by the 30th, if everybody could just meet for five minutes at some point to pass that. Okay, so, we'll, we'll look at that when, um, we get these numbers in. And hopefully, we can, we can get some in before the 30th. Um, yes, Deb?
I got a question, so these, these quotes that we're going to be getting these estimates, it's for the fire escape and for the downstairs exit door, or what, what are the two?
No, it's, it's, it's whatever Sean is giving you for the work he's going to do.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Plus, plus the woman that he gave you the name for, Elizabeth, I think he said his, her name was, for the fire escape.
Okay, so it's the envelope work, okay.
So Sean should be giving you an estimate for the envelope work.
Okay, nothing to do with the exit door?
I don't know if he's got the exit door on that or not.
Yeah, well, we talked about it.
We talked about it, so, so let's-
He may include it to see whether he includes it or not.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, let's just wait and see if he includes it, and if he doesn't, we can, um, see about that.
I, I have a question, the, the town is mentioned a number of times, as far, even, even as some of the public, as far as, you know, having a five-year plan going forward, which is, is what the CIP is supposed to be actually about and included in, so, all these things that we've brought up, and even things we haven't brought up yet, are we just going to wait on them to, say, the next year for the CIP and not do, and?
Well, we can certainly, we can certainly, over the next couple of months, when we're looking at budgets and stuff, um, talk about a five-year plan. Um, Mike McCouch said that the school stuff has been on the five-year plan for over 10 years. So I'm not sure how good five-year plans are, but, um-
I'm just wanting to bring this out to fruition, so things start to get done.
Well, that's, that's the thing, things have, things have been pushed and pushed and pushed in the library because of turnovers and, um, staffing and all of that sort of stuff. Now that we've got a board that's all been elected and is here at least for two years, I would at least like to start putting together plans for what we're going to do in the future and get started on some of this stuff.
Might like to see that too, because I know passports, there was a thing about sick leave, never was it, attention was never brought to it. I, I had brought up years ago, the fire escape, nothing ever came of it. I mean, a lot of this stuff has been hanging around, like you said, for quite some time. It was said that it was going to be taken care of or looked into, or, but nothing's ever come of it, so, that's why I'm saying with, with, you know, all this planning and all this work that we're doing, you know, I, I just want to see it, you know, come to fruition, you know, just spinning our wheels and going nowheres.
Yeah, okay, so let's, let's look at getting those two estimates, and then, over the next several months, um, trying to put together a five-year plan as to how we want to do things and, and what we want to do, okay, so let's, let's see if Sean gives us the estimate for the back door, because he did look at it and said it was something he could do. Um, and see if that comes in on his estimate, and if not, we'll look into doing that someplace else. Okay, so, are we good with all of that stuff now? So, if we're, if we're good with building and grounds, um, other committees, Joan would like to start a fundraising committee. Joan, you want to tell us more about that?
Um, well, I guess we keep on hearing that the function of the board is to raise money for, for the library. Um, I think we do better fundraising, whenever I've worked on fundraising before, if you have a specific reason for it to, you know what I mean, if we say, oh, we want to do this with the funds, and then you people do cooperate more and they work harder. But I think that the fundraising can also be part of integrating the library better into the community. There are a couple of things I'd like to do. Um, this spring, we've got one that I'm kind of working on, or have been thinking about, that would be an April, May thing, because the company that we're gonna be involved with doesn't open again till April. But there are different things that we can do, I've talked with Deb on some things that we could do. Um, Deb has suggested that we do a, or we talked together about doing a miniature golf among the stacks, um, things like that, that would be kind of family oriented, that could be done in winter too. Um, so there is, there are a lot of things we can do, and I think that it's important that we get started on it, if that is one of our functions, if we choose not to do that as a function, then we have to, you know, kind of pass that and decide to do otherwise.
Joan is right, if you look at what the jobs are of a board for a nonprofit organization, fundraising is one of them. So, um, anybody has any ideas, talk to Joan, um, Joan, you said you've been working with Deb, um, anybody else want to work on this? Just say so, but you don't even have to work on it, if you've got ideas for stuff, just let Joan know, and-
I think, I think having somebody else to work on is kind of important, I mean, Debbie and I discussed, but you can't put anymore on Deb and Hope, I mean, they are, it's not like they're sitting around looking for things to do, not.
I understand that, it's just, there are only six of us on the board, and if we have too many committees, then, you know, we, we run out of people, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to help, I just don't have any ideas.
Well, you know, I wondered, Kathy or Elena, are you interested in doing fundraising or something?
Well, as for me, fundraising was always the lowest point, I'm like, oh, good, fundraising.
You gotta be a party planner, that's it, right?
That's not me, that's definitely. My mind is not works, doesn't work in that way, you know?
Oh, yeah, like I said, I ha, I have no ideas, my, my mind doesn't work, I mean, I'm willing to help set up things, but my mind does not come up with ideas.
Kathy, what about you?
I mean, I could see myself working on this, but I, I'm in a busy place, I, I, I can't even imagine taking on more right now, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, it's, it's well intended, for sure.
Okay, so if we do something over the summer, can we call on you maybe?
Yes.
Which is a little easier for you.
Yes, right.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand that, okay.
And it's for me, I definitely, if I can at that moment, then I definitely will come and help set things up, you know, with some, some event together, I mean, during the time, at the moment of the event, but the other part, no.
No, it's, people find it easier to help out too, when you say, can you do something on this day at this time? And then they usually, they usually can do it, but if you go in and say, we need somebody who's going to do something every week, or, you know, twice a month or something, then it's more difficult for them to arrange. So, we have to think about that, also, is there any reason why people who are not on the board can't be on, can't be on the committees?
No, no reason at all.
I, I don't know how that goes, okay.
No, that's, I think that, there are, there are some rules involved with that.
But, okay.
They could be volunteers, definitely people who are volunteering.
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
Have to find it out.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is, um, we, we could use, you know, some of the, um-
Some of the friends might be willing to do this.
Yeah, um, that's what I was gonna say, we could probably use some of the friends, hang on one second.
We could just do, if Joanne is responsible for, she takes responsibility on herself for putting those events together, it's not one of the committees, that's something what she does, and she can involve anyone she wants, really. Without calling it committee, because committee is supposed to be members of the board, so that's where the difference is. But you are free, you are free to involve people, we are not the only ones.
Right.
That's the way you look at it, huh?
And, you know, Friends of the Library's job is also raising money, um, so, you know, I, I don't see why they couldn't get involved with this.
Yeah, I, a couple of them might, you know, I- Yeah, I, a couple of them might, you know, I can, I can see a couple of them doing it and. Having fun, but anyways, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, I'm, I'm on. Oh no, sorry, I was going to say I'm on the state site for library stuff, but I'm not. I'm on Massachusetts's site. I messed up.
Debbie wants, Debbie wants to say something.
Yes, Deb.
I just want to say that you bring up the, the fact about the Friends group. I'm sure they would like to work with the library as far as raising money. That's something that, that's what they do in their entirety and also you guys do is one of your jobs. I, I mean, I'm all for committees and everything because I, I, I believe in teamwork. I, I, I think committees are good because I think sometimes you need to have one or, or two people in charge to kind of lead the way and whatever. But everyone on the board should be involved in a part of everything that goes on with the library. So even though you're not saying, you know, on one of the committees. It, it, it still falls on our shoulders that we, we should be putting in our two cents or our time or, you know, whatever it takes to make these things come through for those who are on committees that are making things happen or, or leading, you know, the way. I, I would hate to say that just, thank you, John. I'd hate to have it just fall on two or three people in the committee and only them.
Right.
I'm just affirming that everybody should know about what everything, about everything going on in all ways, so.
Okay, um, now I'm on the Connecticut site. Um, but everything's at 90-degree angles. I can't read it.
Um. Let's, let's just go with it.
Okay.
Let's just go with it. Wait, there's no reason why we couldn't have people from the, from the Friends, people from the community.
No, I mean, this isn't something that has to be a board thing, as Deb said. It can be everybody. So, you know, we don't have to, to limit it to, it has to be a committee on the board. It can be just a community group. And I know she's super busy and I saw Rebecca on Saturday for the first time outside of a Zoom meeting and had no idea she was six months pregnant. Um. So I know she'll be busy this spring, but she also has kids and younger kids. So maybe she can give us some ideas at some point of the stuff her kids like to do that might help. So.
On that note, as long as it doesn't interfere with the Pokemon Club, that. That her and Wyatt are putting on at the library, she can do anything else she wants. I get first tips.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh yeah, there is one thing.
Yes, Joan.
Um, it just, just to stop and think about it. It came up in the meeting on Saturday that the town tricennial is coming up in five years. Okay, so we're talking about a five-year plan. It might be time to just stop and think, you know, what kinds of things can we do? It might take us five years to come up with good ideas. Because I'm, I'm feeling like the, like a dry well on this one. But anyways, if we run across things that we think might be pertinent to at least just. Write down the ideas, stick them in a folder and then when it gets to about three years, we're going to have to really start thinking hard on that. Okay.
And the library is going to be 100 years old in another year or two. I forget now. I'd have to look up at my notes, but, you know, we should do something special because the library is going on 100.
Yeah, yes, we definitely need to do something about that if the library is going on 100. Do you know when the, when the actual date is?
I did. It's in one of our notes from our meetings. I, I don't have it in front of me, but. Again, I, you know, until Joan just brought that up with the town, I, I kind of forgot about it myself, but. We did speak about it a couple of times and it's, I think in a year, I know not two years, might be a year now, so I can find out for sure.
Then it is time to plan.
Yes, if it's only a year away, it's definitely time to plan.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Okay, then present to speak. Anybody have anything to say? Mary, Pat, I don't know who C and Bob are. I apologize.
Karen Ann?
Yes.
This is Christine of C and Bob.
And, and I, I sat there and said, Joan, how do you pronounce her last name? I didn't know that was you.
That's me. Just, so this is Christine's office. I just have a couple of things to go over. The, there is a town meeting Wednesday night at the Old Town Hall, seven o'clock. And they will be discussing the, trying to. Get an ordinance in town to create a, an ARPA commission. And Atlanta is right. This commission has not been formed yet. They are hoping to put something together. The town does have quite a bit of money coming to it. So I, I personally feel that it's a good idea to have a number of people, organizations and groups involved with this to try to disperse this money. I believe we have three years. Before. I would bet the government takes it back if we don't spend it. Anyway, that's number one. So please, if you're able to come to the meeting Wednesday night, seven o'clock. The other thing, you're talking about CIP. CIP projects are anything over $5,000. And I think, I, I. I'm a bit dismayed to hear, and I've never thought about a fire escape or any egress out the back end of the building. I think this is a great CIP project for you folks to. You know, to get in touch with the CIP committee and really push and try to get this through for you. I hope you can get paperwork to them before their deadline or by their deadline and try to get that on their. What I want to say, not their agenda, but at least get it presented to them and make sure that they're aware that this is absolutely something that needs to be done for the safety of everybody working in that building.
Safety issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I did not realize CIP was anything over 5,000. I thought it had to be bigger than that. So thank you. Okay, Mary, Pat?
Um, I didn't really have anything to say. I think Christine summed it up really well. I, I was thinking it was $10,000, but she's probably. More in tune with that CIP and I believe they meet every year, not every two years.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's a two-year plan.
When I said that, I didn't mean that, that they only meet every two years. I just mean if we don't get it in by the 30th and it doesn't go in till the end of next year in 2022, which means it would be 2024 before we saw the money. That's what I meant by two years.
Oh, I thought you were saying that they only met every two years. Okay.
No, no, no. And it would be two years before we would start being able to see the money.
Yeah, I would focus on that fire exit too. I think that's. That was the primary concern. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anything else the board wants to say?
No, not today.
Okay, well, if nobody else has anything to say, then I will adjourn at H21 and if I don't talk to any of you before then, enjoy your holidays.
Do we have to have a motion to adjourn?
Um, okay, you want to make a motion to adjourn?
I, I don't know if we have to or not. I don't know if that's.
Kathy's nodding her head that yes, we do.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Seconded.
Okay, Elaine, second. All in favor? Hi, it's unanimous. Bye, everybody.
Bye, Merry Christmas.
If I don't see you before.
Happy, have a happy holiday.
Merry Christmas. Yes, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Yes, Merry Christmas to you and everybody. Okay. Okay.
Okay, Deb?
Let me do this.
Deb, since you're still here. Let me, give me a second. Give me a second. I got to get out of my sharing thing. Let me stop the recording.
Okay, here we go.